One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We've been coming to order. We do have posted in force for chapter five, October six. As many, also known as the Texas Open Book Act. Members of the public, we wish to speak shall each have three minutes to address the court regarding matters not written on the agenda or item on the agenda. The commission of court may not deliberate in making any action upon the items that are posted. The exception is that it must be limited to either specific factual information. I have done the day.
Mayor, please. Mayor, please.
Got item number one, approved minutes, October first, twenty twenty-five, speedy, and October sixth, twenty twenty-five, slave.
I approve the minutes on October one and October six. October one recommended, October six, special.
Motion ten seven, all over. Motion carried, I don't know if you'd like to transfer it to the next.
I want to approve the budget transfer amendment.
I'll say. Have motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number two, approved by the bills fifty-four, six. One reason it looks so big because the tax bill we had, money collected by the sheriff's board goes to the tax office. Five hundred forty-three thousand, no, seconds of bills.
I'm making motion to approve the pay bills.
I'll say. Motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number four, payroll. Going back to number three, home deals, there is certification.
Transfer.
And claim capital.
That's what we're doing. Need change the motion to include the certification.
What is it?
And claim capital credits that we accepted last time.
Should be to approve budget transfers and to accept the certification of this.
I'm making a motion.
Say.
Motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. There is no payroll today. Item number five, report. Have report from JP one. Have report from JP three. Have report from the county clerk's office. Report from senior services. We want to point out on the senior services report that on October twenty-four, Allison Hotchard will be at the senior services to talk about transportation. And remind people that bingo is scheduled each month at the Butler Fairville and Kip Center.
Motion second through.
Say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number six, program.
No action.
It's getting close, but you talked Brian, didn't you?
I talked to Brian, I talked to Kelly, yeah.
They said they were too good.
They were good.
They sent out a text that general consensus was leaving alone right now.
Yeah, all the chiefs were agreeing, sleeping alone right now. But there'll be something we need to watch, because it is getting dryer every day.
Yeah, it's close.
And then talking with Jim Hollister, what's he called, the governor had it as.
So the governor had it, last week, put in a statewide declaration for drought and wildfire. That means that Freestone and a bunch of other counties, over one hundred and sixty-nine hundred counties, are now under a statewide disaster declaration for wildfire at this point. Personally, we put in our own letter to the governor and locally declared disaster, that way if we do get into a major wildfire locally, we would actually possibly get recouped for it. Be covered, get extra resources, so.
It's just something to think about if we were to put the bird down, or when we did, then we fall under the declaration that the governor made. I just wanted to give you that.
But you can't put it on by yourself.
We have to do that again.
Very much appreciate it.
Item number seven, special review scripts. No action. Item number eight, through bonds and education, fifty, kind of kids and boys. Have certification for Jimmy McAdams, basic civil process, T code. Jimmy McAdams taking your T code license. Jimmy McAdams, state and federal law date. Andy Shavers, public investment fund, ag training. Lloyd Lane, public funds, best of training. Five hours and another Lloyd Lane, additional five hours. Other, education certificates.
I'm making motion to approve this again.
I'll say.
Motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number nine, consider going after sealed bits on roof replacement on annex three.
Commissioner, I handed up the assessment package earlier. We went and looked at that roof, the lower section of the federal building with air annex three. The big concern is it's leaking really badly in the stove room, but it's right in the corner, so we looked at, okay, can we just fix that corner for now? But by the time we tear it out, we have to put in a new control joint. We have to re-slope the back section so it doesn't just pond into that and cause a bigger problem. So that's why it's pretty expensive just to fix that section. And then we looked at, okay, let's get a budget for a twenty-five year and a thirty year solution for that lower section with, we're going to do some repairs in the top section until it's over until next year, the year after. So this will be looking at the lower section. If you do approve the budget, then we'll have a pre, I'll finish the design this week, we'll have a pre-construction, pre-bid meeting Monday. Bids will be due next Friday into the auditor's office, and then you could probably, you know, you could have it signed off, head your next commissioner meeting, or go after that.
So on this quote right here, the, that's not any repairs to the upper roof?
So we got a line item, that's what I think it will cost, but we'll bid it out as all one item, and, you know, that's what it takes off. So they'll have to do the repairs to get the water tight on the top, and they'll have to do the lower roof as well. And like we did on the courthouse, if you want to bid out both the twenty-five and the thirty year option, and just try to see where the numbers fall, that's what we did on this, and you ended up taking the higher one because the number came in pretty solid. And then we would just bid it the same way we brought it through the PIPs program. That way you get your bids back faster and get it watertight before January.
We need to have a bid now, do you?
We did, yeah.
That motion.
Sure, yeah, I have a book.
Oh, I see.
It's leaking, we got to fix it.
We got to fix it. Have a motion in second, all in favor of that.
Is there anything over there, Judge Monday, that we need to, my perroopers end to walk the job, is that okay at that point, on Monday?
Yeah, Sheriff, did you hear that, there'll be some contractors over there getting on the roof above dispatch Monday? And, yeah, there's a, there's a metal ladder with a hatch up there, so no key, gonna have to go.
That's why we'll bring a ladder, but just, we'll be around the premises, maybe noise a little bit, so that's a different way. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Judge.
Item number ten, resolution for criminal justice grant program fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Yes, actually, ten and eleven, these were accomplished earlier in the year with Judge Grant's signature. E. Grant has asked us to resubmit, resign with new signatures in place before I can finish out the submittals and get these grants closed out, so.
But just updating the information.
Just updating the information, yeah.
Have a motion to update the information on number ten.
I make that motion. Say.
Motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number eleven, resolution for state homeland security program. LEPTA projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, same thing, just updating.
Same thing, yes, sir.
I'm making a motion. Monday.
I'll say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried, item number twelve. Do you consider possible actions on agreement between inflection point LLC and Freestone County Sheriff's Office? I got it, Jerry. This is monthly device management, this falls under the mobile device management, MDM, for the laptops that will be, be used in the, that these vehicles which work in conjunction with the CAT system inside of dispatch. The first estimate that you see there is just for the monthly management, especially keeps on mobile devices in compliance with cyber security policy from CEPs. And then on the second page, that estimate is for, that's a one time fee, the first one is a monthly fee. And this inflection point, the gentleman that does this, they take care of the CDAT, for sheriff E. Force system, and their mobile device management as well. And I did speak to him on the phone, and we went over this. And he gives very good references to it, awesome. But the page two, this is a one time fee, outdoor equipment, which will allow the downloading of data from the cars into the building. It's kind of like a secure Wi-Fi extender more than anything. So that eleven hundred and ninety-five dollars is a one time fee.
And it helps us with these just.
Exactly, yes, exactly. All part of the cyber security compliance. Need a motion to approve this agreement between inflection point and Freestone County Sheriff's Office.
I make that motion.
Say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, will be discussion to remove Anthony Waters from James Law Tugwell and Amy Lullis as members of the CPS board for non-attendance per bylaws. As I understand it, there are still plenty of members on the board right now, we would not be taking any action today to put additional members on, but per their bylaws, these have to come off for lack of attendance.
In per their bylaws, you can only miss three meetings without having, without having some sort of excusable absence. And so they've missed three or more and not have had a, a reason to be excused from missing that meeting, is why they're being removed.
Do these people have been notified that they've missed or anything, do we know?
I'm not sure, but from what Beth and other members of the CPS board have told me, it's been, it's been several months, at least five, six months, since any of them have been to a meeting.
And how often do they meet?
Once a month, the first, first Monday or Tuesday, I think it's first Monday every month.
I make that motion to remove those members from CPS board for non-attendance per bylaws.
I'll say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, it's going to be the discussion to remove Blair Gage as a member of CPS board due to not residing in Freestone County.
I'm making a motion.
I'll say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. Y'all want to skip item number fifteen and go to item number sixteen?
Yeah, I got this thing here. Two, right here. You guys got the tax, anybody know we got?
It should be in your binder, there should be three tax certificates, one for each parcel. On the two that are being added, since the twenty twenty-five taxes just came out, it does show that there is a balance of like two hundred and seventy dollars for each parcel.
This replant is about this kind of property, and tickets to what they already own.
These are the first taxes.
That's kind of a roof that everybody.
Yes, and then, and then these are just the receipts for paying for those taxes.
It appears that we have everything here to do that, and so I will make a motion to approve replant application of the workers' phase six, lot fifteen B, one fifty-six R, one forty-six, and one forty-seven, and combined into lot one fifty-six R dash one.
Say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. Item number seventeen. Seventeen is going to be very similar to what we just looked at with the sheriff's department, which was on item twelve. Same company. So this is for the laptops that will be in the constable vehicles, which will be precinct two and precinct three constables. One of these will be for the DA's investigator, and one of them will be for Leonard and Mercy Management. So this is a monthly fee, which is a cyber security compliance with those four laptops.
This is, and the question is basically the same thing as the other?
It's the same company, there's, there's no contract attached to it, but this, this one will be a monthly fee.
I make that motion to accept mobile device management software for the constable two, three, investigator, emergency management for the laptops.
I'll say.
Have a motion in second, all in favor of that. Motion carried. Item eighteen, same company. Makes this a little bit different, is this will cover up in district court. We have some Wi-Fi issues up there, so what this will be, is like a unified device that is more secure. And there's a new copy machine up there which will be shared between district court's office and the district clerk's office. So this same secure Wi-Fi system will allow the copy machine to work wireless, because the building up there, there isn't no hardwired run to the location where they're going to share that. Also, in this quote, is for adult probation, they're going to be receiving iPads for. Also in this quote is for adult probation, they're going to be receiving iPads for people when they check in. And for these iPads to download correctly within their new system over there, you have to have a unified secure Wi Fi enabled in that building itself. So that's what the two charges you for. And this is a one time bill, this is not a monthly.
I'll make the motion.
My second.
Have a motion in second, all the way right. Motion carried. Out of number fifteen. For safe possession, deliberation real property in court, for six real code five five one nine oh seven two. Now, man thirty one.